Steve, we're about to turn on the good mics.
Now we can hear that you.
We live?
Yep.
Live, connected. We've got Steve. Great. We'll open the meeting then. Welcome everyone to night one of the Board of Selectmen Budget Hearing, where we hear from department heads, committee and commission representatives. This is night one of two nights of fun and frolic. And I think before I hand this over for our town administrator to do the balance of the talking this evening, I think maybe a quick round of introductions might be in order, just so we can all remember who everybody is. Would our town administrator mind getting started?
Sure. Dave Guinea, town administrator.
Hi Kayla Lacoma, Finance Director.
Karen Lee, Vice Chair of the Select Board.
Lacy Dunn, Chair of the Select Board.
Mike Ray, Select Board.
Josh Garretson, Select Board Member.
We've got remotely.
There's something over there.
T P N, Select Board Member.
Lori Knight, Budget Committee.
Gerald Knight, Budget Committee.
Tom Williams, Positionary.
David Brownlee, Public Facilities Director.
Excellent.
Any chair about this one?
And we're just finishing up introductions. So you're right on time. Would you mind just introducing yourself and then we'll get into the party?
Yes, I am Emily Flaherty, I'm in Budget Committee.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. And David, the floor is yours.
Good, thank you. Welcome. For some of us, it seems as though we just left. And for the rest of us, it seems as though we just left, because we've all done this before. Emily, have you participated in the whole budget review? Oh, good. So we haven't all done this before. So I'll start at the very beginning. You have, everybody has in front of you a copy, hopefully, of the FY24 first draft of the municipal budget. Just by way of introduction, with the exception of the first couple pages in there, each time you see this, down in the lower left-hand corner, we'll have a date. This one has February 13th, 2023 on it. We'll always want to make sure we're all working from the same version, because it will change over time. And ultimately, the board is up. I see the first thing that's going to change, where it says B O S recommendation. B O S recommendation will say S B recommendation in the next draft. And then ultimately, the Select Board will be making their recommendations on the budget draft. Tentatively, that's scheduled for March 13th for their final approval. And then it will head on to the Budget Committee for your work and your decision-making and your recommendations. And then ultimately, well, end of April or first of May, the Budget Committee will make its recommendations. So, just so everybody's got the same draft, also in the front of your book is a schedule that looks like this, that has when and where people will be arriving, hopefully, tonight. And we'll try to do our best to stay on schedule, but I can ramble, so you may get off. Just like to hit a couple of highlights that's required of me by or by the budget for the town charter, which is a little budget message. This is a little more than what's required, but not a lot. You have your first draft, the initial requests, which come in from department heads and committee chairs and provider agencies and anybody under the sun. The budget is, initial requests are up 10.13%. $272,085 above what was approved by the voters in the current year. Lumped with that is non-property tax revenues are currently projected to decrease by $43,495. Can talk a little bit about revenues later. Not necessarily an ideal situation. I wouldn't, at this point, raise the red flags. This isn't uncommon to what we've seen in previous years, where requests always seem to be greater than where it ends up. So that's kind of why we start tonight with the requests tonight and tomorrow. And then ultimately, those will be revised as we move forward and ultimately on to town meeting for approval. So there will obviously be change. The goal of tonight and tomorrow night is to hear it all, or close to it all, so that you can get the big picture before anybody starts adding and subtracting items from the budget itself. It's nice to know what the universe looks like before you try to hone it down into something that we all think people can accept and support. This budget draft is really, with limited exception, what I would call kind of maintaining the status quo. There's not a lot of program change proposed in it. There are several new items, and we're going to touch on all as we go through, but I flagged a few for you right here, that I think are important enough to talk about ever so briefly. The first is the ballot tabulating machine. The town has provided one ballot tabulating machine by the state of Maine. For the last couple of years, we have leased a second. The reason we've leased a second is the state's machines have limited, paraphrasing here, but limited brain capacity, so that when they run an election that uses ranked choice balloting, we can't piggyback our local elections on that because of the capacity issues. And we have been renting the machine. So if you recall voting, often times seeing two machines, and we say, oh, put the state ballot in the left-hand one and the local ballot in the right-hand one. And that's the reason why we've provided one machine. If we want to count, hand-count ballots, please sign up and we won't need to rent a machine, but we don't want to do that, I don't believe. We have, in the past, taken the funds for that rental out of contingency, or the board has chosen to do so. Contingency, and we'll talk more about that later tonight, is really for unforeseen or unplanned items that come up during the year that we may not want to have a special town meeting for or need to act relatively quickly. Since this is planned, we've included its cost in the budget. Our ambulance agreement, we will be entering the second year of our 30-year contract. The contract has an escalator within it that uses a C T I that comes out in May. So I put 10% in there for the time being, but it's unknown until May. I do not anticipate it would be more than 10%. Our current snow removal and winter road maintenance contract, this is the last year of a five-year agreement we have with our contractor. That project or that work is currently out to bid. So we'll see change in there. We have carried a fairly substantial cost in that line item, because, as we understand it, other communities are experiencing a fairly substantial increase in what it's costing to do snow removal. And so we've carried a larger cost in there. That will be refined likely prior to the Budget Committee getting the next draft of this, but we have a number in there at the moment. The budget carries a cost for the funding of a digital equity committee, which was formerly the broadband committee. Broadband committee completed its work. One of the things they recommended was a digital equity committee. We're going to talk about that tomorrow. So that's included in there. And there's also an ambitious effort put forth by the cemetery trustees to clean and restore a number of our ancient and/or abandoned cemeteries versus in the past, they've just been primarily focused on maintenance items. But I'll let the cemetery trustees talk more about that tomorrow. The budget contains same staffing level for the coming year as we have in the current year, with one exception. The fire chief, who will be here later tonight, is proposing the creation of a utility terrain vehicle or U T V officer with a small stipend. But otherwise, it's the same staff. Next page, right now, the budget includes an adjustment to wages for employees of 8.7%. To mirror the social security adjustment made in January, that's been traditionally a starting point for the selectmen for their discussions. It hasn't always held true, but oftentimes has. We have listed in the budget package the last, since FY11, what's gone on for adjustments in terms of the cost of living adjustment. That said, there are two, or there's really three exceptions. One is the animal control officer, who will be here, hopefully, here a little later tonight, made a request to increase the stipend for that position by $1,000. And the fire chief has recommended increasing the truck officers, of which there are four. Primarily because he hopes to assign them more additional duties. Nobody's getting rich being a truck officer for the fire department, but we'll talk about that. And the third that isn't listed in here is, right now, there's nothing carried, although the selectmen have completed the town administrator's performance evaluation. There's nothing in the budget beyond last year's until they decide in the public meeting what that will be. So talked a little bit earlier about budget revenues and offsets. This year, in the first draft, the budget carries the numbers that we've either received in the current year or will be receiving in the current year, or what was budgeted last year. Number of reasons, primarily on revenue sharing and local road assistance, is the state hasn't decided what they are going to allocate to the town for local road assistance program or revenue sharing. The governor's talk last night was to fully fund revenue sharing, which would be good news for us. But until we get a little bit closer and those projections actually come out, cautious on revenues. So that's that. And we don't yet have our FY22 audit complete. We're in FY23. FY22 audit's not complete. So we have, for the time being, carried forth the same amount for fund balance. That may be subject, well, all of it's subject to change, but that could change in the interim. Town charter requires us to talk about, or at least make you aware of, town's debt position. And we'll talk about these more, at least the road bond, more later. But the road bond, last road bond payment, hooray, will be this fall, new fiscal year. So that will be paid off, and we'll have a couple more years left on the school debt. Overall, in the new fiscal year, the town will owe just a little over $1 million in debt principal and about $24,500 left of interest payments on that in the next couple of years. Town charter also requires that we give you an estimate of building activity. We're talking probably in the neighborhood of $2,000 of taxable valuation. And that knocks off the quick budget message.
Two million.
Yeah. What did I say?
2,000.
2,000. Woo. There's a little difference. Too many. All right, I'm already tied. One of the other things I want to make sure I point out is, if at any moment anyone has some questions, please feel free to grab my attention, because otherwise I'm just going to keep right on talking. Jerry, go ahead.
So in the total debt, you had 1 million, and then there's four digits. Which one is correct out of that?
1 million in four digits. Let's see.
Is it 765,076?
Well, if I could add in my head, which obviously I can't do on paper, I think the, wait a minute, the zero, well, why don't I do this? I have a calculator on this phone, and I'll just add that up. So that should be 1,051,794 plus 24,588. 95. Somebody should proof this before it goes off. Okay, you ready for this? The number should be 1,076,000. The 5 is the extra digit. 38295. Not 10 million.
That's good news. I'm glad there's never was.
Look at that. We just saved $9 million. We can all go home. All right. For everybody that's a repeat customer in here, the budget format really hasn't changed from previous year. Going to give everybody a little refresher, particularly Emily, who hasn't had the opportunity to sit through this before. The budget is set up very similar in order with our town meeting warrant articles. So I'm going to skip over the summary page and jump to page three, which gives you a sample of one of the accounts. So working from upper left-hand corner to right-hand corner, we have whatever the account is, the heading, in this case, Public Works Transfer Station. The next column is what we actually spent in FY22. Fiscal years are labeled based on the year that they end in. So that means that that year started July 1 of 2021, went through June 30, 2022. And that's what we actually spent. The next year is FY23 is the budget amount. So that's what the voters approved last year for us to spend this year, from July 1 of '22 through June 30 of '23. The next column is what we've actually expended through the half-year. I caution people that, very simplistically, it's nice to take the half-year and double it and say that's what you'll spend in the full year, but not unlike your own home budgets. Some things are front-loaded that we do early in the fiscal year, and some things we do late in the fiscal year. But it gives you some sense of where we stand. The next is the percent expended through the half-year. That's just simple math to tell you that we've spent whatever percentage of the money allocated through that half-year. The column in the middle that says FY2024 request is what is being requested for the coming year, whether that was prepared by a department head, a committee chair, or the committee chair is going to present it for the committee, a provider agency, whoever made the request, that's what we'll all be looking at in the next two nights. The percent change looks at what the request is for the coming year versus what was approved in the previous year. Sometimes that may say new, because it's a completely new item. Other times, it'll say plus something or minus something, because we're proposing to spend more or less in the coming years. The remaining 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 columns will all be blank or say negative 100% for the time being, because the selectmen haven't made their recommendation as yet. That should, there's another change that's coming. It won't say selectmen. It'll say Select Board. Kayla's going to have to remind me of all these things, because she's going to have to make all these changes. Ultimately, as I said earlier, I believe we're shooting to have that column completed by the Select Board on March 13th of this year. And then the percent change for this year will be what the Select Board recommends versus what was approved in the previous year. And then this will go on to the Budget Committee. Those columns will be filled in. And then the Budget Committee will get the same thing as the selectmen. They'll make their recommendations at some point. We'll calculate the percentage. And the last column is TM approved. That's town meeting. We fill that in after the town meeting, which will be in June. Ready to get into the meat of it? How are we doing on time? I'm already behind. I can see that already. Always do. So we're going to start on page four, which is Administration and Finance. And what that is, is primarily everybody here in the town office and what we do and how we do it on a day-to-day basis and where we spend the money. So this account, you'll note at the top half of this is kind of a summary. And then the bottom half of the page four and most of page five is a little more detailed breakdown of how those, some of those numbers were derived or what that means in terms of definitions. So running quickly down this page, or, I don't do anything quick. We have wages. So once again, you can see what was actually spent a couple of years ago, what was budgeted in the current year, how much we've expended through the half-year, and what the request is for the coming year. And again, that's adjusted by, right now, the percent change is 6.7% change. If you look down below, just after the half-page mark, you can see the wages for all the employees here in the town office. Everybody, with the exception of the town administrator, is on a wage step scale. There's one employee that's eligible, one of the administrative assistants, is going from step seven to step eight, because she's had a successful merit or performance review. And she's been five years at step seven. Between step seven and step eight, there's a pretty good gap in terms of time. Between the first five steps go up relatively quickly, because in theory, being an employee becomes more valuable to us quicker. And then you kind of level off in how much new things you learn. We've got you on the hook. We keep you. So I don't know how in-depth you want me to go with each one of these items, but I can hit the highlights or the lowlights or everything. If you run down the percentage change column, you can see that most of them are relatively zero or close to it. Couple of jumps up. We're proposing a fairly good percentage increase. Primarily, that's due from one of the organizations that we used to belong to, which was M C E D, which was the Midcoast Economic Development District, has morphed into the Midcoast Council of Governments. They've got a different fee structure, which they're looking to provide us services based on the population of the town, which has increased. And that's, so it's kind of new, but it's kind of not, if that makes any sense whatsoever. Let's see. Hit the highlights again. Computer purchases. Prices of things that we'll talk about the next two nights. Not much is going down, as all of you probably have experienced, including our computer purchases. We have, now have 11 workstations, and we look to replace those on about a five-year schedule. So we do two a year typically. I'm going to jump to the bottom, and then I'm going to give you a chance to ask some questions. This is, you'll see right above that bold in the middle of the page, the ballot tabulating machine rental. And that's $2,500 in the budget, and you see new, new, and new. Can't do math, can't divide by a previous year's expense when we never budgeted for it before. So to try to get us back on schedule, I'll stop talking about Administration and Finance and see if somebody has some questions. I see Mike does already.
Yeah. Yeah, I see that you, for memberships for M C O G, you put in 3,000. And I know that they're based, the last number they gave us was 21 or 21, 2 or something like that. Are we expecting them to, but I know they're reevaluating. They're doing the math again. Do we expect them to go above 3?
I don't expect them to go down.
Can we reasonably expect them to be above 3,000?
I don't believe so. Right now, their fee was, I believe, a dollar and a quarter per person. And depending on which census number you use, I use the 2020 census, and they use other. That's somewhere between 2 and $3,000. I asked the executive director, Matt Eddy, if they knew what next fiscal year would be, and he said, nobody didn't think it would be less expensive. So I rounded that up to a round number. Chief, you can come in if you want. And called it good.
Great, thanks.
Not quick to fire the department, because I'm talking too much, but we're gaining. So.
Yes, yeah, we'll see.
If they would tell me what the number was, I'd change the number.
Yeah, okay.
So you've been on the Midcoast Council of Governments, formerly Midcoast Economic Development. So that's a fair increase. What do they actually do for us? What is our benefit of being a member of that organization?
Well, right now, we're not a member, and they don't do anything. I shouldn't say they don't do anything for us, because they're doing a sample project for us. It's the contract. If you can recall the presentation from Matt Eddy, there certain services that would be included, and then there are certain services that might be additional, available to members only. They'll do certain land use ordinance changes was included. They review certain projects for us. If the planning board needed some technical assistance for us, was included. Somebody help me on the other things that were included.
Comp plan was one of the ones that stuck out in my mind. They're helping rewrite a number of comp plans that failed to pass the acceptability test. So that was one of the things that stuck out.
But I don't believe that was an included service.
Two other things they mentioned, other thing they would do is that they basically help get money to facilitate grants and available funds out there. And second, kind of like be the facilitator and special projects the town might have, like the Thompson Green, if that was a similar situation up here a month ago, we might ask them to.
I remember that presentation.
We'll dig out what they gave us for that and make it sure it's in your next packet when you do the budget review, too.
Great. Thank you.
So I went real quick through Administration and Finance. Real slow through the everything else. Has anybody got any other questions on that one? Seeing none, I'm going to flip quickly to protection, animal control, so we can get back on schedule before the chief shows up at 6:35. Who's here right now? Animal control, we're required by statute to have an animal control officer to address domestic animal situation versus wildlife. Wildlife is done by somebody, not us, inland fish and wildlife or whatever. Not us. However, the animal control officer does have certain responsibilities. We've got to certain animals with rabies, but here and there. Overall, looking at the same expenses as previous years, with the exception, as I stated earlier, the animal control officer has requested an increase in her stipend, which has the ripple effect down through FICA and Medicare. And the animal shelter, we currently utilize Paws in Camden, has asked for a change in their compensation for that service as well. We take stray animals there or runaways, or I guess that would be a stray animal.
David, when was the last significant increase in the ATO stipend? Was it a couple, two, three years ago?
Been more than that. We did a we had wage and personnel looked at all of our stipend position. We have a wage and personnel policy board, which is a committee of citizens that the select board at the time assigned to kind of do a review of the stipends. And it was pre-COVID, so it's, I'm, I'm guessing it's been five years. And then they did a mini salary survey.
And would it be possible for our next conversation to have a regional comparison?
Yes, it would. I've been looking up to go up for the, for the ACO, doesn't seem to be here to talk about it, so.
Any other questions regarding animal control? Holy Moses, we're early now.
Okay, well, I'll talk a little bit more to get us off schedule again. Or maybe I'll let the chief talk. We're now moving on to page seven, which is protection fire department. Joining us at the big table is Chief Fullington from the Lincolnville Fire Department. Highlight just a couple of things that are out of the chief's control at the moment. That's here, this is the first time it'll show up near, again, near the middle of the page towards the bottom of the detail. You'll see a line for snow removal. We have carried a round number in that, $15,000. We have, well, we have some idea. Current year is the cost of snow removal at the fire, two fire stations and the walkways around it is a little over $12,000. That's, as I said earlier, in their opening, that's out to bid currently, so when that, when those bids come back and get analyzed, and then hopefully the select board will be able to make a decision as to who we're going to use. That number of $15,000 is going to, in all likelihood, change. Up or down is, your guess is as good as mine. With that, I'm going to talk for another minute, keep chief in the, on the hot seat. Officer stipends, firefighter wages, and FICA and Medicare is what I'll talk about. You can see the breakdown. We have chief, deputy chief, and two assistant chiefs, four truck officers, and one proposed utility terrain vehicle officer. The chief's position, the deputy chief's position, and the assistant chief's position, we've increased by 8.7%. Oh yeah, while you're here, do you remember when we adjusted wages for stipend positions? Because you've got one.
Yep, I do got one. Was it, I feel like it was two years ago.
At least two years ago. I thought it was pre-COVID. Regardless.
Maybe.
He doesn't know either. But he keeps showing up.
Two years, five years.
What's that? I'm just gonna make another note for find that stipend changes. The truck officer, which I'll let chief talk about a little bit more, and the UTV officer, UTV being new. Truck officers are slated slightly more than 8.7% because Donnie's gonna give them more things to do. Add your.
Yes. With the truck officers, I'd like to increase their pay. I mean, they're, they're checking everything on their truck once a month. They're checking all the tools, any jackets, any masks, all the SCBA, all the air bottles. They're checking the engine oil, the tire pressures, they're firing the trucks up, they're running the pumps. And now, since we have that nice undercarriage washer, they will be doing that as well. And I, I don't remember the last time that we've increased their stipend. It was 500, and I'd, I'd like to go to $750. I think it's still really not much for what they do for the trucks. But I'd just like to make sure they know that we, you know, respect and appreciate what they're doing. And on top of that, we've never really had anybody reliably checking the UTV, which it seems like in the last two years, we've been using more and more for recovering people or looking for people in the state park. And it would be pretty embarrassing if that happened to be out of fuel, or the battery was dead, or it just flat out didn't run correctly. So I'd like to add approximately $150 a year for one of the members to go over that as well, once a month. Which with that is same thing, checking the tires, checking the trailer tires, the engine oil, the cool levels, starting it, running it around the fire station on the exterior, just to make sure everything's working properly, the brakes work, all that stuff. Also, electric winch on it, there's a wireless remote. So I, I think it's worthwhile having it done for the community.
Just to jump in on top of that, for anybody who doesn't know, UTV or agility terrain, you know, it's a side-by-side.
Yes, eight, four-wheeler.
Six.
Six, yeah, six-wheel cylinder with a, with a bed on the back. We also use that for forest fires and wildland fires, spring, summer, and fall, there's water tanks in it as well, respond to that.
And we'll talk about this a little bit more with the capital improvement late tomorrow night, but the town currently has four primary firefighting vehicles. We keep those on average 30 years, so we're rotating a 30-year-old truck out. About every seven and a half, seven, eight years, we're purchasing a new vehicle. So we're not faced with doing all four in one year and then having four 30-year-old vehicles going nine years from now. So keep the maintenance done. Three of those vehicles are typically housed in the center fire station, and then one is down at the beach fire station. Thank you.
The other pay increase is every year, we have to have all our hoses and ladders tested by a dependent, independent company. We've been paying two guys $150 each, basically to take the day off in the middle of the week, six to eight hours of their time. I think it's time we, we increase their pay to $250 for taking a whole day off of work. And driving our trucks back and forth to Rockport and putting everything back together for us. The other increase was training. We've been doing pretty well at training twice a month, trying to really get on top of that in the last couple of years. And we're doing a lot more training, a lot more in-depth training. And we luckily have some younger folks that are joining and want to do some outside training from getting fully certified to be interior firefighters. So we seem to be spending more money on the outside training and in-house training. So I feel we need to increase that a little bit because I think, talking with Kayla, we think at this point, we're already over the budget for this fiscal year.
Keep training.
Well, it's worth it. They'll come, they'll come, we'll train them.
The other, the other thing that we're over right now is our fuel budget. We're gonna put fuel on trucks. Period.
Yeah, yeah, you have to, you have a choice. But I think the fuel budget is a reflection of the training as well because we're running the trucks usually when we're training. And honestly, in the last couple of years, our call amounts have gone up quite a bit. I bet our average calls three years ago and beyond were 70 to 85 calls. In the last three years, we've been in the average of 120 to 140 calls a year. So that is just indicative, we're gonna use the fuel on the trucks.
One, one of the other things I wouldn't highlight is down, is electricity. We're proposing up 20%. It's not really the electricity. As you know, if you look back to what we actually spent in FY '22 was $1,854. At that point, we were buying our electricity from Revision, who was running our solar array. The town purchased our solar array, and our costs went down. Obviously, because we're not paying anybody for our electricity anymore. What we've, we're still connected to the grid, will always be connected to the grid because of power we generated, the solar array. It's more than we use at the fire station because it all goes out to the grid. The basic cost for having a meter has gone up, so we're budgeting a little bit more money. But if you look back two years, we're still well below what we used to be. And as we all know from our homes, unless we're fortunate enough to have our own solar arrays, our cost of electricity just went way up. So.
I think it's about double compared to five years ago.
It would.
It used to be like for houses, 15 cents a kilowatt hour, all charges included. Now I just, if you mind, 31 cents.
Yeah. It would be, it probably, as an aside, Joan, would be a good exercise if you found yourself with some time to go back and look at the assumptions we made on the solar array purchase versus what's occurred in reality. I think it was very fortuitous and forward-looking of the community to have invested in that. But anyhow, we get sidetracked, sorry.
That's okay. Where are we?
Equipment purchases.
Truck fuel, we were talking about electricity.
Truck fuel, training. Building maintenance, we've seemed to always stay below budget on that, so I didn't increase it. Electricity, equipment purchases. I mean, I think we're, we're just, we're on budget and plan on purchasing pretty much everything we have been every year as far as SCBA and our personal protective equipment and other things that just wear out, flashlights, tools, and equipment. But the cost of a lot of that, like everything else, has increased. So I've increased it appropriately for what I hope it ends up being, this is here. Equipment maintenance, we seem to be under budget on that usually, so I left that alone. Truck maintenance is always a hard one. The fees from Greenwood are not supposed to go up amazingly. Whether they do or not, it's one of those things, we have to keep the trucks maintained, but hopefully we'll find, figure out a way to stay on budget with that. It seems to always be a struggle. But this is one of those things you could never really predict if a truck's gonna break down or we're moving the truck to the frame.
Greenwood does what?
Greenwood does all the, the engine maintenance on the trucks for the chassis, as well as the maintenance on the pumps and the valves on the apparatus.
Thanks.
And they, they also do the certifications for the pumps.
Well, I got a couple of questions. Donnie, how often does the equipment, our personal protective gear for the, for our firefighters, how, how often does that age out? And that, that obviously necessitates replacing, so I, I wonder if that, if something like that is in here on a rolling basis?
Yes, it is. Yeah. If you're, if they're an interior certified firefighter, they, no matter what, that turnout gear has to be replaced every 10 years. So I think two or three years ago, instead of trying to buy 30 pairs of gear at $3,500 a pair, I've started, I think we ended up having to do that, kind of got dumped in my lap where we had to do all of that at once. And now we buy, I try to buy three pairs of turnout gear every year for the interior guys so that at that point, for two reasons, wanting to stay ahead of it all, but also if you use your turnout gear in a structured fire, you should be cleaning it immediately after. You shouldn't be wearing it again, it has carcinogens in it and all kinds of bad stuff. So I make the guys go and clean it. But the problem is, is at that point, if we have another structured fire here or to a mutual aid town, they don't have certified gear to wear. So if we can get them all, two sets of gear, they're never out of a certified set of gear, and hopefully nobody gets in trouble with anybody if anything messed up.
That's a lot. If you've got 15 active firefighters, maybe even more than that, that's two sets of gear. It's a lot as an average. It just, I'm looking at these numbers and I'm, and I'm trying to think of what that looks like, and obviously you're all over it. But I wonder if it rolls quick enough for you?
It's, I think right now, we've got 15 interior firefighters. So in 10 years, we should be able to cycle them all through. And as well, you know, for other guys here and there that need gear that are non-interior firefighters, we can still buy, buy a set for whoever needs it.
The other truck maintenance. You show that to them?
Okay. Now also.
No, I, you know, it's.
Yeah, I, I understand. Equipment purchases, does that, that include like your barricades for roads, things of that nature? I know at one point, it may have been last year, and it may have carried over till last year from the previous year, we had talked about some extra cones and barricades and things and this and that, and then that got caught. Did that ever get back in? And did you get anything?
We ended up getting a grant through, I believe, MMA, they replaced 100% of all of our road cones. Plus, plus more. I mean, it wasn't 100% funded grant, some of the money did come out of that equipment purchases. And I believe we also purchased like two of the plastic soft horse barricades for that. Or, yeah, I think that's, or maybe it came through the EMA.
I was gonna say, those EMA.
Was it the EMA director? We ended up with those.
And I know you're, again, you're all over it, but I get thinking back of what we've talked about and what actually transpires as we get to budget, and I remember that there was some stuff that had to be put aside. And stuff like that. I just hate to, I hate to see our emergency services personnel being chomped in and have it, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's, I try to prioritize stuff like that and make sure that we get it one way, one way or the other. Also, I think we, yeah, out of that, we also buy the, we buy three of the air pack bottles every year because those expire in 15 years. So that's, that's another hurdle because we replaced all of that, like, like the PPE, we replaced all of that in the same year. So we have 30 air bottles that are all going to expire on the same day. In 15 years. So we'll have a surplus of bottles, but if I buy three every year, we'll, we'll have more than enough before the time comes.
That's, that's all I've got.
Other questions for the chief? Thank you so much.
No questions.
You guys stay on time.
Anything else, if we wanted to go? The hose and last ladder testing, that increased, but that was just quoted price from the company.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a question. Yeah, one question for you. I know that fire station still has DSL, right?
Yes.
You do, yeah, okay. Are you hurt, are you guys hurting without fiber right now?
Oh, that's a lot.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Because I know you've got fiber not too far, I'm right on fifty-two.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the end of the world. I mean, you know, we go online and try to stream training videos and stuff in the winter time when the weather's really bad. And it might buffer every once in a while, but it's nothing, it's not the end of the world, we're not dying without it.
But no, but in terms of communications.
Yeah, your, your communication.
Yeah.
Communication, no, that, that seems to be fine. I don't, I don't see, I mean, I think it would be good to look into doing, but it's nothing that's sparked in my, my mind. Do we, I mean, do we know how much it would cost to even run DSL, I mean, fiber all the way?
I don't think anybody's ever explored it. Part of the challenge is from the road to the station.
Right.
Is conduit.
So.
Unless you want to do aerial.
No, 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 because lifeline, lifeline likes using that area.
Do you guys know what diameter you have of conduit?
I, I.
It would have to be a distinct conduit as well, it couldn't be a shared conduit.
Oh, really?
There we go. Actually, I think, I think there's more than one conduit there.
Is there?
There is, but I don't think there's an empty spare one.
I'd, I'd be real curious to, to see if, if that's a conversation starter. If we can get ballpark numbers and effort to undertake that, because after that emergency.
Right.
Scenario that we ran.
Yeah, and, and I go back to that.
Yeah.
The, when we had the communications seemed to be challenging.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trying to run that.
Well, radio wasn't, but part of the drill was get radio down.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, if we could get fiber in there, probably another good thing would be some kind of a cell phone booster. You know, a really good cell phone booster, because when you're inside, especially when you're in the bays with the steel ceilings and, and the walls on the inside, there, there is no communication.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Who's your provider?
My provider.
From the station?
Uh, oh, for the internet?
Uh, no, sorry, not a cell phone.
There, for the station, there's none, but for, for my personal phone, it's like US Cellular, some of the other members have Verizon, and it's just, it's just a dead spot in that area. I mean, you can barely make a phone call outside.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Like, yeah, after, after that, it just seems like there were enough connectivity issues of different sorts that it, it's at least worth having the conversation.
Right, yeah.
Was there another question over here? Okay, thanks.
Is it good to all, yeah?
I, I could just comment, um, so our house, we have Verizon and we're in sort of a dead spot, one bar, maybe two bars, like that.
Yep.
So I got a Verizon booster and, and it runs off the internet.
Wifi.
It picks up to the wifi and then the cell towers are hooked into the internet. So it really runs through the internet and then broadcasts around in the rooms so you can have your cell phone.
Yeah.
That works to do for five, five bars now.
Really? Yeah, it'll be very beneficial then.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief? Anything else for us? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
There's no more questions for the chief, we're gonna flip a couple pages to protection other, which is on page nine. And this is a little bit of a other, is a little bit of a catch-all for some various and sundry, um, things that we'll run down here. Um, streetlights, we, the community, um, eliminated a number of streetlights and switched them to have LED fixtures here. You know, one, one couple of years, right?
Tears the old thing.
And there's a cost. Um, insurances, um, we have workers' compensation insurance, which is required of us, unemployment insurance is required of us, uh, risk pool, which is all our buildings and public officials' liability insurances and whatnot. And then deductible, we have a thousand-dollar deductible. We budget to have one claim a year, basically, and hopefully we never use any of it. Uh, legal services, um, we have a town attorney and also included in legal services is sometimes we have to hire what's called conflict, conflict counsel or outside counsel if, uh, the town attorneys advise the code enforcement officer with something and it ends up getting appealed and it goes to the board of appeals, then we'd hire a different attorney for the board of appeals because the town attorneys advise the code officer and vice versa. If the code officer's done something that the town attorney hasn't assisted with and it gets appealed, then we hire the code officer, uh, conflict counsel to assist him and that. Um, we've budgeted the same amount for legal services. Um, if I could predict legal services, I'd be in a different line of work. Um, a lot of that happens to us, not so much. We have things reviewed, we have town meeting warrants reviewed, um, ordinance reviewed. If we sell a piece of property or we acquire a piece of property, we have all that stuff, uh, assistance to legal services. And then we have people that unfortunately, um, come knocking on our door with a little summons to say, "You gotta go to court." That part's out of our control. Uh, emergency management, uh, we have an emerg, well, we don't have an emergency management director currently. We have a position available, if anybody really wishes to be emergency management director, we pay a small stipend to that position, we budget for some supplies. Currently, that position is vacant. Ambulance, as I had in the opening remarks, we're in our second or our third year agreement with Northeast Mobile Health Services. Um, by the new agreement that we entered this past year, that's adjusted annually in May. I don't know what the percentage will be, but we'll know in May, we've budgeted ten percent. I don't believe it, I don't believe, and I hope it won't exceed ten percent, but that's where we are. Uh, Knox Dispatch, our firefighters, although we're in Waldo County, our firefighters and our ambulance service are dispatched through Knox Communications, and we pay an annual dispatch fee. Uh, this year, that's proposed to be twelve-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for that service.
David, is that number set by the Knox County Commissioners?
Uh, the Knox County, whatever the Knox County budget process is, is the Commissioners and then it goes to their budget committee for review and approval. But yes, that's, um, and they have, um, Knox Communications, they have a separate portion of their budget for assigning that. Um, it's, they give you that out so much for dispatch and then a percentage for fire and a percentage for ambulance and a greater percentage for law enforcement, and we get a big zero in that column.
Yeah. Do you have a question? Yeah, uh, David, on the emergency management.
Yep.
Oh, you said a part of it went to supplies as well?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so it's not all just the stipend for that person?
Yep.
Okay, okay, so that, that would include things like bottled water in case or blankets for a warmage station or things like that? I mean, I bring this up because when we did that, that drill last time, we realized there was occasion, there was often a need for bottled water, for example, in these various scenarios. And is that where the, um, that would come from?
Uh, it could.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna show up in an emergency, I know that.
Right, um, yeah. We, uh, in the past, when we've had an active emergency management director, we've had specific requests come forward from that individual who'd sit here and explain to you what they anticipate for supply.
Okay.
Um, a couple of years ago, and I think we talked about it when in the fire, we talked about the barricades and some cones and some signage that EMA, um, wanted to purchase within that. Uh, we've got a, um, you know, they call it a jump kit, it's got an oxygen mask, you know, an oxygen canister that they were gonna provide to the school and did, and that, then the school nurse changed and that's come back to us, but, yeah, it, so to be quite honest, we put five-hundred dollars in there not knowing what the next emergency management director might wish to do. Eight foot, eight foot zero in there and avenues.
That would, that would help, yeah.
Emergency management directors show up and then say, "Oh, I'd like to get a notebook," and we go, "Well, take this one."
Thanks.
Yep. And then the last line, uh, on protection other is parking enforcement. We used to have its own, it used to have its own category and actually had ours and kind of defined somebody. This is just supplies, unfortunately for yours truly and for David, the other David, um, we've been, we've taken on some of the parking officers' duties and responsibilities, which we don't really necessarily enjoy, but somebody's gotta do it and I need some chalk or some parking tickets or the little warning cards, so we got a big walk with like fifty bucks in there to buy that stuff. And I'm happy to answer other questions about protection other. Seeing none, let's turn the page to ten, and we'll talk about the town office building. Obviously, you're in the town office building, we have a part-time custodian that cleans the building. We're proposed an eight-point-seven percent increase to her wage. Um, which is reflected in the top line, that's an hourly position. Um, we typically plan on about five hours a week and then we've got a couple hours in there for special things that might come up during the, you know, through the windows or whatever that would be beyond, but it's normally done here. Uh, and then we have, I'll just run down through these quick, uh, trash removal, landscaping, uh, which is mowing. That project is also currently out to bid. Didn't mention that under fire department, but we mow grass, but we have grass mowed for us at the town office, fire department, um, Knob Scott Park, little bit at the harbor, trying to remember all the other places. Those are the big ones, um, and we assign those costs to their, wherever. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised to see that change coming, but maybe not. Uh, security system, we have a security system here in the building. Um, intrusion, smoke, fire, there's a water bug in the basement, senses water. I'm trying to think of what else we, uh, carbon, carbon, which one of the carbons?
Monoxide.
Monoxide, yeah. I always wanted to say di- dioxide. Carbon monoxide, um, and we, that's the security system. So that's our, um, maintenance cost and the test and inspect. Uh, building maintenance, you'll note that we've, uh, recommended a, uh, increase in building maintenance. Couple of reasons. One, we have a special town meeting this year for some items that have gone, you know what, here. Um, the building, as new as it looks, is now eight years old and the random little things after eight years are, you can only run the nooners so long and then you've got to do a little more maintenance. We're also proposing to have, uh, at least a portion of the exterior cleaned. The far end of the building that never gets sun, I won't say never gets sun, rarely gets sun, is starting to show some green discoloration, I guess is the best way to put it. And, uh, like to get that cleaned off in the coming year. Uh, electricity, once again, our costs for electricity are down from a couple of years ago when we were paying for it, but the budget made, is the budget up here? Budget is shown for a slight increase here because of our CMP charges.
Um, so I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Now, charge for the firehouse was six-hundred dollars?
We have two, beach, beach station and the center station.
They're paying for a connection for two meters.
Yep, we have two meters.
Okay, but you're only got three hundred and you have more than two meters. Want to?
No, we have one.
Is it, uh, wow.
At the town office.
Oh, this is just the town office?
This is just, this is just this building.
Okay, good.
Yeah, you're gonna see that in numerous spots throughout the budget when we talk that we, where we have meters, we've proposed an increase because we need the money to pay the bill.
Yeah.
Um, the other changes are mostly down at the bottom. Biggest, the biggest one remaining there is snow removal, once again, that's out to bid. And that's not just plowing, we have a walkway that goes around the back of the building that we're required to keep open for emergency purposes so you can use that exit. Um, we do the walkway to the post office, the back steps, round our heat pumps because we've had experience with those filling up with snow and freezing and not working, not pleasant, and the generator. Any questions about town office building requests?
Yeah, yeah.
Whoops.
We have Steve, just so you know.
Yeah, okay. Mike, Mike had a question first.
Oh, yeah, no, about the, the power washing the exterior side and planning that. Has this been done before in this building?
No.
No, this would be the first time?
First time.
You're talking about just a section of this building? Not, not the entire?
Well, we probably would try to do the whole building, but we certainly would start with the far end, the dark side of the moon.
Okay.
Because a lot, I think if you looked at the building, um, moisture and sun, any place that get, yeah, it all gets the same amount of moisture, but it doesn't all get the same amount of sun in the non-sunny spots or where it's.
Do you, do you have an idea, uh, based on this line, how mu, how much we're gonna spend on power washing, I guess?
Probably a couple thousand.
I can see like twenty-five-hundred bucks, more or less.
I don't know.
Okay.
And Steve, did you have a question?
I was saying, Steve, Steve Flot.
Oh, Steve, we lost Steve.
We lost Steve.
We lost Steve, yeah, he's in the ether.
Oh, bummer, okay.
See if he's.
Yeah, current.
David, is, do you, is that enough for heating fuel? I don't know. Well, most of our heating fuel is, uh, solar generated because the heat pumps run on electricity. And that does, the new portion of the building is all heat pumps. The old portion of the building has, there's a small propane boiler in the basement.
Okay.
And then this side also has radiant floor heat that's off that propane. Should we have, it doesn't run unless we have an extended period of cold weather outside. So. And then the fuel also does our generator so that if we had power outage, we can still operate as long as the generator cooperates.
All right. There are questions regarding the town office? All right.
We'll turn the page and go to page eleven. Contingency. Um, as I mentioned at some point earlier tonight, contingency is for, is just that. For the unforeseen items that pop up in the course of the year, we're operating roughly at, well, it's an over two-million-dollar budget and ten-thousand dollars gives the board of selectmen some leeway should something come up, um, that's unforeseen without having to call a special town meeting. We, we've listed, um, thus far through the half-year, we haven't expended any monies out of that, but the budget shows what's been expended out of that in the last, what, six years? Six completed fiscal years. Um, I would say that, um, we're pretty protective of spending or not spending contingency. No questions on contingency. We'll turn one more page to page twelve, we'll talk about code enforcement. Uh, town employs a part-time code enforcement officer. Uh, his wages are included here, once again, eight-point-seven percent. Uh, we have some monies budgeted for a part-time alternate should, uh, the code officer be on vacation and we need to engage a local plumbing inspector or another person to fill that. We haven't, uh, necessarily done that frequently in the past couple of years, but. We haven't necessarily done that frequently in the past couple of years, but we don't let Frank take any time off, I guess, or we manage to work around it. The rest of it is just remaining the same for his professional development or training. He is required to be certified for certain aspects of his job and certainly for the local plumbing inspector. So if you look back up under part-time wages, it says CEO and that's code enforcement officer. LPI is the local plumbing inspector. The BI is building inspector and the HO is help officer. The code officer fills all those roles here. Budget some money so we can belong to the code officers associate, I don't know what the name, proper name of that is. Publications and supplies if he needs, wants to subscribe to any publications to keep up his knowledge. Equipment purchases, if we need a tape measure or a pop level or something like that, so he can do his job. And water monitoring is if we come up with a situation that might be impact, where surface water might be impacting a public water supply or someone's health, we have some money to take some tests. Questions regarding code enforcement officers?
When was the last time wage and personnel reviewed his, that the CEO position salary?
I don't know the answer to that.
I'm just curious.
I hope they did that when?
I know, I can't remember. That's why. I didn't remember if that was part of a department head review we had or?
Reach. I don't know. I will say that code, certified code enforcement officers and local plumbing inspectors, if somebody wants a new career path, there are multiple towns seeking code officers and plumbing inspectors.
Yeah.
But probably if you can inspect plumbing, you probably can do it too, and you probably can make more money doing it than inspecting, but we won't go there.
Okay.
Any other questions about code enforcement before I turn the page? Oh, oh.
No?
Yeah, no, I'm right. Turning the page to assessing, page thirteen. We're gaining on you, David, we're getting close. Town contracts with an assessor's, certified main assessor to provide our assessing agent We contract with an individual, his contract amount is included in there. He's proposing a six point two percent increase to that contract. He was nice enough to remind us that since, to the fiscal year fourteen, it's only changed nine point five percent. Our current assessor, assessing agent, assessor's agent is planning on staying with us through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. If we'll keep him that long, he'd probably get done earlier if we'd let him. As we talked about last year and we're going to talk about again later tomorrow, where we've contracted with an assessing firm to do a revaluation that will be put into place as of April first, twenty twenty-five. So the tax bills that come out in August of twenty twenty-five will be based on the new assessments. At that point, we're looking to transition from the individual that's currently filling the role to the firm that's doing the revaluation for us in hopes that they'll continue on in the assessor's agent role from that point forward. And also included in the assessor's agent thing or count is remote access software that he can access remotely when he's not working in the building with us. Anyone assessing? Okay, how are we doing? Look at that. Seventeen seconds to spare.
I guess I can see into the future.
Page fourteen is highways and bridges. Public facilities director Roundy is here, going to talk a little bit about it after I talk a little bit about it. I'll do, I'll do the easy part, let him talk about the hard part. The easy part is part-time wages, which you see a substantial decrease. We are trying to wean ourselves from hiring part-time individuals to work for the town and move more, or move some of that to contracted individuals. Most of the work we do there is contracted. Part-time labor has a number of challenges that goes with it in terms of training and liabilities to the town and whatever else, so hence the reduction. You can see through the half, first half of the year, we've spent very little in that. But sometimes we do need to have contracted labor. The lower, the remaining part of the budget where bulk of the money is spent is on machinery, materials, trucks. Hey, Doug? If I want to step on David's toes and talk a little bit about it, maybe I'll talk about it and then when we get questions, I'll point at him. Materials, we are proposing machinery, sorry, back up. You can see a rough breakdown of what we use in, under machinery. Again, we don't have any, so we contract all that out, including grading the roads, shoulder box and broom, which puts shoulders out on the side of the road for us, particularly after we've resurfaced the road and then the rooms are cleaning it off. The york rake and the Harley, Harley rake is for grading the road primarily in mud season, which is coming. Hay mulcher for erosion control, that's a piece of equipment that you put a bale of hay in and it chops it up and shoots it out the end to cover the grass seed so that hopefully things don't eat it and that hopefully doesn't wash away in the first rainstorm that comes down the road. Trucking's pretty self-explanatory. We hire trucks, we hire excavators for culverts and ditching, et cetera. Roadside mowing, we contract out for roadside mowing on an annual basis. Our patch truck is just if we hire somebody to go around and do some patching in driveways or potholes, whatnot. Tree and brush removal, that is expensive and there's lots of it, as you can, well, you can't see the breakdown, but we spent, we spent the better part of what we budgeted in the current year already, just keeps coming. Some reason keeps growing, keeps getting in the way. Sidewalk and beach parking lot sweeping, in the spring, we sweep the sidewalks at the beach and the parking lot down there, as well as what's here at the Town Office. And then crosswalk painting, parking lot restriping and stop lines. Get those painted on an annual basis. Materials, you're going to wonder why you're here. Like stepping on your toes, life is good. We buy various materials that we have the machinery puts out, gravel, stone. If you compare this to last year's budget, there was more gravel and no stone. One of the things that we have experienced with David is we're trying different materials in locations where we have been unsuccessful in the past with some of our practices to see if we can minimize how many times we have to go back. So we decreased gravel and increased stone. So you may see us, very rarely would we just place, this is two-inch stone, so it's a stone that has a, passes through a two-inch screen. Very rarely would you see us use just straight two-inch stone, but we've been blending that with some of our gravel to get it, I'll call it boneier, to put in some of our softer spots, particularly in the spring.
Yeah, stone crushed, what, a solid?
Yeah, yes. Yeah. Crushed material, seems to bind a whole lot better than bank run, but we do use bank run as well. Reclaim and cold patch. Reclaim is crushed up asphalt that holds on some of our slopes, particularly hills better. Cold patch is pretty self-explanatory. Culverts and riprap, we have a certain number of culverts that we replace on an, on an as-needed basis versus an annual basis. Fix them when they need, when they need them. Riprap is, is the largest stone that you see that we usually put around the inlets and the outlets to minimize erosion. Guard rail and miscellaneous supplies, we have some locations with guard rail around town that somehow managed to get hit or whatever, fix it when we need to. Crack sealing, we attempt to extend the life of our pavement structures with crack seals to keep the water out. Jury's out on whether it actually extends the life, but we're still trying. And erosion control materials is, A, to go in the hay mulcher we talked about before. Jute mat is hay that's in a mat that you roll out in a ditch. David and I have been looking at doing some projects that would go out to bid in terms of identifying ditch areas and then having contractor come in and put the jute mat in the bottom with the seed, lasts better than just putting hay and then on the, so that's on the bottom of the ditch and then hay up the sides to minimize erosion. So we budgeted a little bit of money there. Miscellaneous storm expenses, somehow we have storms that just grab us by surprise. And so we budgeted some money there and so if we need some engineering services, minor engineering services, come out of that. Trash removal at parks, we have trash that gets removed at Breeze Mare Park, Duck Truck Beach and the Beach Beach. Money for that comes out of this account. Sandsalt building maintenance and sandsalt building electricity. Behind us is the sandsalt building, requires maintenance and activity. This sandsalt building electricity, everybody should note that we have electricity there with lights. One account, three hundred bucks, slight increase from last year because cost is going up for electricity, but for the meter itself and getting it from where we generate it to there. Street and work zone safety signs, unfortunately, we have signs that seem to sprout wings and fly away or get stolen, that we replace. Also, we have roadwork signs and barricades and cones for providing a safe work zone. Our paving program for the coming year, our paving plan is to resurface. This is just maintaining the paved roads that we have. We're looking at doing both sections of Tucker Brook Road, the paved portion of Maslin Road, it's all in one area. And then if we have any culverts or trench paving around town, where we replace culverts to pave those back in. Winter road maintenance, we've projected a fairly substantial increase to that. Once again, we are out to bid with our winter road maintenance contract. We don't know what that cost is going to be, but we will soon and that will likely change. Kind of, we've budgeted a substantial increase in that based on what we're seeing other communities are experiencing. Beach parking lot, that, that's currently out to bid for winter snow removal. Our winter sand is currently out to bid and then salt will go out to bid later this year in a cooperative effort with a number of other communities. So we base that on the best information we have at the time. I'll open this up for questions and a little pepper to this guy. If anybody doesn't know, I think I introduced David, David, maybe he introduced himself. David started for us last year in January?
January, yes, first January.
And so last year at budget, he was, he didn't have really a hand in putting it together and was kind of a Mickey new guy. Did say a lot. This year, I just love talking about roads and bridges, so I get to talk a lot and he hasn't said much. He was more involved with the development of this budget proposal. I think we've had some good experiences and so we'll throw it over to questions. One of, one of the two Davids will answer or try.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice.
This has to do with the part-time wages, this has been cut fifty percent?
Yeah.
Just based, based on what has been expended in the past, is there any reason we can't cut it down to seventy-five percent? Cut it down further? I mean, I, or am I making that rookie mistake of looking at what's been expended in the half year?
Well, you can, you can cut it to any number that you wish.
No, no, I'm wondering what you guys are comfortable with.
We've recommended seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I know that.
We'd like to see that continue to diminish, but from time to time, our best laid plans just fall apart and we need to find someone.
Right, and needs arise.
To do certain things and, nice to be able to compensate them.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
But if you made that a lower number and we make it work or we drop Peter to pay Paul.
Right.
So, over the last couple of years, we've had severe storms, every summer, every winter. I expect that to continue by looks of what's happening. Do we have the budget to, to plan for that in this current budget? I mean, we're looking at five or six inches of rain, you're looking at floods, culverts washed out. I mean, what happens when that?
We have very little emergency monies in this budget for those type of events. Wasn't, what, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, we had a little over two inches of rain in about six hours. We expended probably fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to fix that, well, to patch that. Some of the damage, we can't even see. We, once again, rob Peter a little bit to pay Paul. If you look under like gravel, we have twenty-six hundred yards. We don't know what spring's going to bring us in terms of frost coming out and muddy roads. We don't know how much exactly we're going to use when we resurface a road to put the shoulders on. We make our best estimate based on past practice and past experience of what we're going to do in the future. Some of that material, we have stockpiled over here. We didn't use our stockpile when we had the event three weeks ago because the stockpile has a habit of freezing. We were fortunate that we were able to line up a contractor that could bring us the material and we utilized it. We brought it here, we loaded it in the smaller trucks and took it where we needed it. That's not always available to us. Previous year, we've had to beat into the pile over here with either a loader or an So we, we don't have a specific emergency line, but some of the emergency things are built into here. Just because of past experience, we know that we're going to use so many, but we don't know. We assume we're going to use so many yards of material because the past has dictated that to us. Did I say that? Makes sense?
He's been nodding the whole time, you've been doing a great job.
This, this last event, he, as he brought up, was probably a twenty-one thousand dollar event. You don't normally get two and a quarter inches of rain the first or second week of You have to historically look back and, and like David said, we work off of a stockpile, which in a week or two, we probably can get into that, but there's times when we need to supplement and that's why we're running with the twenty-six hundred yards of material that's sometimes brought in to use on that event, or it might be adding to the stockpile. But we actually decreased the, I believe, the volume from three thousand yards down to twenty-six hundred so that we can implement some of this flat. so that we can implement some of this flat crushed rock, which helps us bridge through some of these storms. But I guess the biggest unknown factor is the weather events. Other than just, you know, a mud season, you know, you're going to go through a couple of weeks of mud season. But winter thaws and rainstorms or the big rain events in the fall, you can't really, other than look backwards, right? And work off of what you've done in the past. Yep.
I know you have some things that you wanted to chime in. Why don't you chime in and then that'll trigger some questions.
Okay, I'm looking at this as if I was anyone else. Winter road maintenance, David has brought this up. We've got some hints or indications from others in the industry that we're looking at a twenty-five percent, possibly more or a little less increase in plowing contract. That's not just for us or we don't even know what ours is yet, but that's what it looks like. Under materials, we have seen, I would say fifteen to twenty percent, depending on the item, increase per yard or per ton of product to buy, whether it's stone or sand. All of the things have gone up just because of the economy, the way it is and the price of fuel and labor. And they're big changes, but it's... That's being seen everywhere. It's not something specific to us. And we are looking at pricing, getting multiple prices. And one thing I think David touched on that I think is important. We are looking at things that are more than a small fix or a mud problem every other three or four days in the springtime to try to put some programs together to put some things out to bid to see if we can get the best competitive numbers that we can. So I think it's challenging. I think some of these things are going to change quite a lot. And David has hit on, we've got quite a few things out and we're going to be starting to see some numbers coming in for some of the projects and some of the services that we require through our bid process coming up in the near future.
With the sharp increase of materials and things of that nature, with a number like that, fifty-nine thousand for twenty-six hundred cubic yards, should we be... If we can count on that, if we do a little bit of a history check on what we have done over the last ten years and if that continues, if the trend of weather, like we were just talking about, is going to continue, is that something that we should put out to bid? You know? I mean, that's a fair amount of...
We could. We typically try to get multiple pricing at the time we need it.
The history, yes.
The oftentimes, part of the challenge is when we need it. It's the demand because it's not necessarily call up this morning and get, you know, trucks tomorrow. But we do have and we do utilize, although we've cut back a little bit on stockpiling so that we can utilize out of the stockpile when it's to our advantage or we don't have materials readily as they hold to us. Some of this is... A portion of that is, is or has been bid or quoted. We don't just... Got one of them.
One of the difficulties that I've experienced more so this year than in past years is even for materials, whether it's the rock or the gravel or the sand. When do you want to buy it? Do you want it next week or if it's a month from now? We don't want to tell you a month's now, a price for a month or three months from now. And we're seeing that in other things that we're trying to do as a town.
All the price, just about everything fluctuates so quickly.
If you don't take it in thirty days, you need to go back after it. And I've gone back after quite a few things for a change of price because of the dynamic situation that we're in right now. You know, I mean, although the people will give me a year's price for gravel or stone, it just... It doesn't happen right now.
This might also be a prime time to channel our inner Bernard Young and say, if we could get some of our gravel roads to a paved condition.
I wasn't going to say that.
Then we wouldn't necessarily be needing hundreds of yards every spring for mud season because the road would be paved.
God bless him.
And it would be so interesting to have a figure for what that could possibly mean for the community.
Well, it would cost us more upfront because you'd still have to put that gravel down before you pave the road. It's not... Short term, it's not inexpensive.
No, but...
Long term, for level of service for residents that persist to call David, David and Kayla and the other people in the office, it would be wonderful.
Well, also with the winter like we're having right now where you don't know whether it's going to be mud one day or rock hard the other day.
David, do you have off the top of your head how many miles we have of dirt roads versus paved?
Eight and twenty-four or five paved.
Okay. Thanks.
So could you figure or have you figured like a payback fine if you paved?
You'd never get your money back.
We'll never get it back.
No.
That's part of the reason why our...
It's but the level of service of that road. If you could somehow calculate, you know, front ends and...
But that's also contingent upon sticking to this make road maintenance program that we've been able to stick to of keeping our paved roads at a certain condition because as soon as you back off from that, you're...
You never get...
It's a steeper hill to climb.
Yeah, that's very important. We need to maintain what we have before we...
If you think, John, I'm trying to think what the most recent one was. Maybe North Cobtown? We've been reducing our number of gravel roads or increasing our amount of paved road improvement. And over time, again, channeling my inner Bernard, it would be beneficial, I believe, to get them all or many more of our eight miles paved. If you talk to our plow contractor, the current one, or anybody that's bidding, if you went to plow, it costs more to plow a gravel road than it does a paved road.
It's harder on their equipment.
Yeah. And you get a lower level of service because the undulations in the road makes it challenging to get the snow off. And maybe they don't bear up as quick and as easy. And in the short period of time I've been in town, I would also say that expectations of individuals with regards to the roads has increased. People were much more accepting of gravel or dirt roads or muddy conditions twenty years ago than they are today.
But tomorrow, there will be a more excellent opportunity to explore in the capital improvement program.
Yes. Sorry, we digress.
Other additional new programs and expenses.
Good boy.
I guess I'm trying to point out the difference from last year to this year on some of this stuff. Culverts, just our eighteen-inch culvert that was three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy dollars is seven hundred and fifty dollars. One hundred percent increase for HDP products. So, you know, simple driveway, you're writing a thousand dollars on for the increase in gravel in the culvert, just an increase of a thousand. It's astronomical and hopefully this is going to plateau off this year maybe and inflation and things are going to even out diesel fuel prices, et cetera. But I haven't seen this happen to this degree this quick over my experience of being in construction. So everyone's, every town is in the same boat. It's a challenge right now. David and I speak of it daily on the difference of things from three months ago, six months ago, nine months ago.
We're all in the same boat and we're bailing quick.
Thanks for pointing this out.
To the other guys.
Any other questions?
Run while there's none.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, David.
Thanks a lot.
David and David.
I'll get us back on schedule. Turning the page to Public Works Transfer Station. On the good news front, the Midco Salt Waste Corporation Board of Directors have approved a budget that requires no change to the portion paid by property taxes from town. That being said, they are looking at an increase in the user fees as of July one, but more to come on that. We don't yet have a finalized copy of the budget, but that's what they voted last week. And that's not really subject to discussion or debate unless you want to get out of that corporation and then we have to pay all sorts of things to have to get out. So I'll turn the page again unless somebody's got a question. Public Works Harbor.
Drive safe, David.
Thank you.
Hi, David. David, good night.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Pleasure being involved.
Take care.
Thank you.
I'll get the Harbor Master to show up at the meeting. Oh, here I am.
This is only night one, David. We can't start getting punky.
I know.
He doesn't have as much time to talk next tomorrow night, is that right?
I got to get back on schedule because I'm here for seven, four and five and I've got three minutes. I guess I'll just say on that, similar to everything else we're experiencing, costs are going up on maintaining our facilities at the harbor. We budgeted for some increases in pier maintenance. A good portion of that pier maintenance increase, in addition to what we anticipate for expenses, is we've proposed some monies to do some handrail repair there. Some of it, I think, is original when the pier was built thirty-something years ago and getting pretty tired. So let's see. Electricity, John's favorites, budgeting three hundred dollars. We have proposed an increase in our annual pier inspection. The fellow that had been doing our pier inspection has been trying to retire and I don't think he's got the money. Any questions on Harbor? I know I didn't talk about that much or in any detail.
What is the wave break survey?
A number of years ago, we installed a stone wave break as part of the permitting process. We were required by our environmental permits from the DEP to survey the beach, both south of the facility and north of the facility on an annual basis to prove that that or to document if there were any changes associated with the beach based on our stone wave break. I would say the answer to that is no. The beach changes based on the storm and the way the wind's blowing. So sometimes you'll see more sand and sometimes you'll see less sand, but over time, it's not really discernible. But so we're required to do that to answer your questions, you know? We have a survey and outfit out of Rockport comes over and does that for us in May of every year.
Are you the question?
Yeah. I know in the past, we have strategically put away money to replace floats as they come due for heavy maintenance and/or replacement. I'm not seeing anything to the side for future float replacement. We haven't replaced them all. Plus, we've got a ramp over here that we were going to do a little bit of maintenance to as a spare. So I'm wondering, is that in there and it's just not listed? You know, the float, periodic? Yep.
You know, that... We have five floats at the harbor that are all relatively new. We didn't replace them all in one year, but we did ladder them out for a number of years. We have not started a float replacement fund. We do have substantial monies in the Harbor Savings Account. And if we had a float replacement fund, it would be the end of the capital improvement program project. We may have floats tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions there? At least for now. Okay.
Public Works Other, this is on page seventeen. The first one we're going to talk about is recreation. You can, as long as you're, you can either come over next to me, as long as you have a microphone, you'll be in good order. You probably also...
I'll print it out when I can.
Oh, all right. So for anybody that doesn't know, this is Doug Grant, a member of our Recreation Commission. The Recreation Commission assists in oversight of recreational facilities, including tennis courts, the ball fields behind the school, Breezemere Park. And we're on page seventeen and go.
So you can see, I'm just going to start on the Breezemere Park maintenance. The only increase over last year's budget is we're requesting two new swim buoys to replace existing ones. So we use buoys to mark the swimming area so that the boaters don't cut the corner and go through the swimming area if they're heading south from the boat launch. We've got a couple of them that are quite a few years old and they're not staying fully afloat. So we're just one, requesting two new swim buoys. The other new item that we have on here is the float launch and retrieval, fifteen hundred dollars. Normally that for the past millennia. Yes, forever. Ed Holbert has volunteered his time to take care of the float launch and retrieval and he has decided to retire from those activities. So we have a budget of fifteen hundred dollars for putting the floats in in spring and taking them out in fall.
Just out of curiosity, would you check for that? We didn't. Okay. Thank you.
We, some of us assisted the Recreation Commission by adding that line and putting the money in because...
It's probably not far off.
We neglected to...
My only suggestion would be is to talk with...
Lake City Floats.
Is we're having that, we store there. Rent that space. Might be a good way to renegotiate that contract to include...
And if anybody happens to be watching at home or in Virginia or anyplace else that wishes to step up and become a volunteer for the next millennia at putting those floats in and taking those floats out, we would gladly have a conversation with you about our community preferences and desires.
Can you talk to us a little bit about the plan with brown tail moth mitigation and tree replacement?
So that was on the budget last year. Also, we actually did not do it last year. We really don't know what the, our experience is going to be until late spring. Last year, we didn't do any, we didn't need to. The oak trees around the park did not have much nest at all. We're hoping it's the same again this year. But the previous, two years ago, we didn't have any and the parkers knew that. So I think it's, hopefully we don't need the money, but we do need to have it in the budget just in case we do need to pay for someone to deal with the brown tail moths at the park.
Thank you. I don't think, I know that the board last year put, why they didn't spend any money because we zeroed it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Always good to ask what you think you need, Doug. Anybody have any questions about Breezemere Park before we move to this?
Karen?
On the mowing, we go in on the assumption that Mr. Louis Agrosta Street is gonna do that again.
He has said he's gonna do it one more year.
That's what he said? Okay.
That's what I was told.
Okay.
I wouldn't I would probably not count on it again, so. Which will we'll have to figure out what we're gonna do in the future. So that's a good price.
Yeah. Killer price.
Yep. On the athletic fields, I really can't speak to the contracted maintenance. That's just a contracted maintenance with.
Sports fields.
Sports fields.
So for the athletic fields over here, the soccer field, the softball field, the baseball field, the practice field. The school has been doing the day-to-day maintenance, for lack of a better word, trash pickup, mowing, occasional rewhacking. And we have sports, we've had sports fields come in to do weed control, pesticides if necessary, which we don't use anymore, fertilizer.
They do the aeration.
Yeah, there we go.
So they're doing the the more, if you wanna call it skilled.
The less the less routine maintenance.
Yes, less routine maintenance.
And yet still essential.
On the marking paint, that is just the town provides the paint for putting the lines in the baseball fields and soccer fields. On the tennis court, tennis repairs, David, if you want us to.
Sure. As the Budget Committee knows, and I think the Rec Committee knows, we've been planning for several years to do the resurfacing of the tennis court. That money is the final monies were approved at the special town meeting. We've got a contractor coming in to do that. All the eyes and attention, the fence needs some work to it to get it back, the gate curling a little bit. So we've got monies in there to make repairs to the fence.
And then the final item on athletic athletic fields is the baseball fence polycap. I don't know if you've been out to the athletic fields, but it's basically a plastic piece that goes over the top of the chain link fence. So if the kid goes for a fly ball, he doesn't get spiked on the top of the chain link fence. We've got large, large sections that are really bad shape pretty much. People watch the baseball game, they lean on the polycap. Over time, it starts poking, the metal pokes in the top and they need to be replaced.
Does that do? Both fields?
That does the one little.
The little league field. What about the?
The other one's not as bad shape and we can probably take some sections off. They come in big giant 250-foot rolls, so we can probably take some of the good sections off and put it on the other ones. We don't see as much of the, if you wanna call it, leaning damage on the other, on the upper ball.
Okay. Let's see, so we're paying to have the fence around the, oh, we're looking to pay to have the fence around the tennis court fixed, but yet there's no mention of the fence being repaired around the ball fields. I'm wondering why.
I don't know. I mean, we've we've talked to a couple of the adult leagues of looking, you're talking about the backstop.
The backstop, there are doors from the dugouts that need to be removed and and re-leveled and put back in. There's pieces missing.
Well, there's I think the other big thing that needs to be done is the full-on field renovation that needs to get done, which the commission, we've talked a lot about fixing the the green monster, the green wall, we've actually put that off until those fields are renovated, which means because otherwise, if you do, if you start fixing a lot of these fences, when you start tearing up the ground and doing the renovation, you're gonna end up spending that money right all over again.
Well, I guess this is gonna be for a different time because renovation is a big process.
Well, you've already got the it's been in the budget.
He's talking drainage.
The drainage issue.
Drainage project.
Yeah, but the whole field isn't gonna be renovated.
Well, maybe you're gonna be tearing up a huge portion of this field to deal with drainage.
Okay, much more than I do then about renovation. All right, I think we'll have a conversation about that in a different setting, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Anybody have some other questions for the Recreation Commission to the rest of this?
I do. Yeah, but yeah, this has to do with Lincolnville Beach Beach Maintenance.
Oh, that's not him.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
You would think it. You would actually think it.
I thought I thought maybe I was sleeping while you're talking about.
You could beat up on me on that one.
I'll save my gun for you, David.
So in terms of Breezemere Park or athletic fields under Public Works Other, anyone, anyone? Or shall we say, thank you, Doug? Keep your thumbs up and quiet.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks.
Take care. Good night.
All right, jumping to the top of this same page, seventeen, we'll work our way down to various items and any further muted questions as we go. Inland Harbor Master, the town employs an inland harbor master. Very part-time. It's a stipended position. The only he doesn't request anything beyond the stipend. I don't know if he knows he requests a stipend, but we pay him. Patrols the lakes and assists in enforcement of town ordinances and state law. We're gonna cook dams. There's no request. Breezemere Park, we just talked about Lincolnville Beach Maintenance. At Lincolnville Beach, we have three porta-potties there for a portion of the year and one for the remain, or do we have two there in the winter now?
Two in the winter.
In the winter.
Three in the summer.
Three in the summer. We rent those out so we don't have to clean toilets as well as as we do. Beach cleaning contract, we have a contractor that comes in for us starting in May, I believe, every other day, and then in the summer picks up to every every day, walks the beach, empties the trash cans at the beach and throws them in the dumpster and they get picked up all the way. They get they've asked for $25 a day for the coming year. Spring and storm cleanup. Oftentimes in the spring, we have debris that's come up from who knows where that gets cleaned up and off the beach before the summer season. Beach cleaning supplies, trash bags and that type of thing that we line the trash cans with. And then we have trash barrel enclosure replacement, which is totally new. We have five cans at the beach. The contractor has informed us those are in various states of disreg, she'd like to see them replaced. I told her I would at least include the cost in the budget. We also have a cost that the L I A is going to talk about tomorrow night about possibly doing some volunteer maintenance to those cans. Those were originally installed, as I understand it, through a Eagle Scout project twenty-something years ago because it was before my arrival and we have patched those in the past and done what's necessary to keep them.
Oh, those Eagle Scouts.
Kind of working on it by there. They're tired.
Well, that was a question I was gonna ask about the $10,000 for. These things. So we're talking about five $2,000 trash cans. Is that correct?
Yep.
That's where the trash.
Enclosures.
What's in it? What's I? Yeah, I guess I don't know what an enclosure is versus.
Inside, inside these enclosures are is a bucket, what most of us have at our home. Thirty-five gallon, these might be bigger than thirty-five gallon, but thirty-gallon can that we put a liner in, we put it inside the enclosure so it doesn't blow around and the enclosures have certain size openings for putting in certain waste and don't have to hopefully not full of household trash. And people that come enjoy the beach, deposit their trash in that rather than throwing it on the beach that we end up picking up. And then on a daily basis, well, in the summertime, on a daily basis, early in the morning, those enclosures get open, the trash cans get pulled out, trash gets pulled out, bag goes in, back in the can.
Yeah.
That bag goes over in the dumpster.
Well, I spent a lot of time down there, but I'll say I've looked more closely.
Two years ago, we had priced out and preliminarily budgeted new trash.
For Breezemere.
Containers for Breezemere and those were 1,500. Two years ago.
We've all talked about putting trash receptacle, is that the?
Yeah.
So is did that's already in the works?
It is, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I I looked at that number first. What? But then.
Yeah, but.
I was just, yeah, I was trying. I couldn't picture it.
These are. These are.
Okay.
A high-end garbage can, Dave.
They're.
Rich of nuts.
They're a little more industrial.
Apparently, yeah.
Commercial oriented than, you know, you would necessarily build in your own backyard.
I guess so.
They don't composite, so they're not as acceptable.
Right, because because they're they're in a harsh environment and all that stuff.
Stop it.
Open the door and they empty themselves.
Okay.
So do we have other questions about Lincolnville Beach Maintenance tenants from Budget Committee or Selectmen before we digress?
Was the beach cleaning contract $25 previous year as well?
No, it was 20 last year, I believe. And if the mics weren't on, this was a recording, I would say, take it, ride, be happy.
Yeah.
It's a really good deal.
For the amount of it, you would, I have been shocked at the amount of.
Daily.
Refuse. It gets picked up.
Walk the beach.
Wild amount.
Yes.
Maybe.
Maybe reason to have a webcam there to some people are more aware of.
Stuff they're leaving behind, throwing throwing things out there.
Okay, moving down to thing Veterans Park Maintenance.
Rosie's saying it tomorrow.
Rosie's doing that tomorrow. All right, so we're skipping that tomorrow, but we'll be back. We almost start there tomorrow, don't we? Well, Septic Disposal Contract, town's required by statute to have a licensed facility, either of our own or contract with one. We contract with Interstate Septic down in Rockland. You'll know, I think you can see it, we requested the same amount.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's not changing.
No, they're not gonna they're not gonna change. We switched.
Yeah, so it was Moores that wanted to increase it considerably. Then we found Interstate that came with a 2,300. I reached out to them, asked them, and they said they were gonna keep it the same, so. I wasn't gonna ask.
Thank you, bud.
Okay.
And I have it in email, so.
Perfect.
Okay.
Questions about Septic? Ducktrap Beach, the town leases the park at the end of Ducktrap, not Ducktrap, the end of Howe Point Road, at the end of the mouth of the Ducktrap River from the state of Maine, and we put a porta-potty there and back up under Public Works Park Trash Pickup, we have a can at the end of the road that is picked up there on a daily basis. Not on a daily basis, it's picked up there. Penobscot Park, we opened the park last fall. Softer, quieter opening. There we'll have a porta-potty, landscaping, which will be mowing, which is currently out to bid, spring and fall cleanup, regrade the parking lot, vegetation control, trees. That is going to be, well, this year will be, last year was more of a work in progress. This year will be our first year of full operations, so we'll get a little better grasp on what we're really looking at and faced with there. So we'll find out. There is a slight deduction or reduction proposed because we're not gonna be doing handrails that we've already done, we're not gonna be cutting down as many trees as we had to cut down or brush and whatnot, so. And the last thing under Public Works Other is the solar array. As we practiced a couple of years, the solar array that's at the fire station. We have Revision Energy do our renewable energy certificate management for a small fee, and we have a service plan for that location and that charge at the bronze level is $2,000 a year.
And the rec management, that do we sell renewable energy credit?
We sell our renewable energy. We actually get. It's it surprised me. It was real money. I was thinking we got over $2,000. We'll look that up to you.
I don't wanna I don't wanna guess.
We'll open with that tomorrow night.
That's great.
Yeah. And that that's a market price. It depends on what the market's paying for them.
Revision works their magic and then send us a check.
Well, if that check is kind of a pain in the butt, just take that electricity right over to my.
I was very pleasantly surprised and there's no there's no guarantee what that would be. You know, I don't know how all that whole market works, but that's kind of why we hired them to manage that for us and that's done. We could have just let it lapse or not do anything and it was like, well, it's just money? And they said, yes, sign us up.
Do you know how much we're paying? Is is that and the service plan all in one lump?
No, the 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 rec, they actually take their management fee out of the proceeds.
Okay, do you know what percentage?
We'll get all that for you for tomorrow night. We'll have that information in hand.
It's listed on the check.
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, great.
Makes you dumb, David.
And that concludes our presentation for tonight. Unless somebody has any questions, right on time.
Two hours just flew by.
And I will say, in closing, like I do every year after every one of these, we burn through them really quickly. Certainly, the Budget Committee's just got their copies tonight. As you digest this, whether it be between now and tomorrow or after tomorrow, before your budget meetings, if you have some questions, we're here to answer them because we're all in this boat together, just ask. And if you're embarrassed to ask in the public forum on TV, call us up or stop in the office and ask, you know, what is convenient for you? We want everybody to have the information they need in order to feel comfortable with making whatever recommendations you choose to make.
Excellent questions, everybody.
It was perfect.
Since we're no longer technically a hybrid meeting, do we have to adjourn via roll call?
No.
Who made a motion to adjourn?
I did.
Who seconded it?
I seconded.
All of us agree. Thank you very much.